I will call the meeting to order for November 10th, Danby Select Board at 7:04 PM. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Abbott.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Fuller.
Here.
Hayes.
Here.
Powers.
Here. All are present. Beth, would you please read the remote access attendance statement?
Procedure for remote attendance at select board meetings. Remote access to select board meetings, where not required by law, is offered in order to encourage access and participation for as many of our town citizens as possible. It is understood that a select board meeting is a meeting open to the public, but not a public meeting per se. Businesses conducted and votes are cast by board members. Therefore, public attendees, in person or remote, who wish to comment on an agenda action item when it is addressed in the course of the meeting should indicate such intention during the public comment period at the beginning of the meeting. To maintain order as well as the efficiency of the meeting, the rules for remote attendee participation are: One, remote attendees will be muted by online host upon joining the meeting; remaining so and less recognized to speak. Two, intention or desire to speak in order to comment or ask questions will be indicated by use of the hand raising function of the remote platform. Three, people will be recognized in the order in which the hand raising function is activated. Online hosts will alert the chair to presence of remote questions and comments. Four, remote participants, when recognized, will unmute their device and identify themselves with clearly spoken first and last name. Five, comment or question will be limited to two to three minutes, after which participant will be muted. Six, general ground rules concerning decorum remains the same as that which is expected of citizens, guests, and board members attending in person. Namely, the speaker will not be interrupted and will not interrupt other speakers. The speaker will treat the proceedings and other speakers with dignity and respect, addressing the issue and not personalities. These procedures for use of the online platform and the above standards will be reviewed at the beginning of each meeting, which we've done. The people I have so far, wait, come up with somebody else, are Sawyer Powers, Douglas R. White, someone on the phone with no name, Gary Durr, Lauren Dever, Annette Smith, Chris Hardwick, Stephanie Meyer, Beth Wild, and Doug White.
Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have no additions to the agenda. Does anyone else have any additions or deletions? Can you tell us?
We can do it under New Business, I guess.
Can you tell us what that is, please?
It was about speed limit signs on the Cascade.
Okay. Have our folks at home heard that it's about speed limit signs on Cascades Road under New Business? Okay, with that addition, I will...
I'll make the motion, we set the agenda.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Now it's time for the public comment.
Actually, I did have a public comment. Last year, I happened to forget to pay my taxes on the proper day, even though I had come to the dump that day, because there's no signage outside that says it's due.
That's right.
Well, there is, like a big sign that says taxes are due X day.
I don't know.
Tell me where that is.
On the big signpost.
On the pole?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Because I was gonna just say I could make a homemade sign to go down in the village and up at the four corners. Does anybody have any objection to additional signage? Great. I'll have to look and see where that is. But is there one on the building?
There's one right on the big signpost.
Right at the entrance.
I'm definitely looking for that. I'm not gonna forget this here by Jeezum.
Okay, any other public comment? I don't hear any, so we will move on to entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of the select board meeting of October 13th, 2022.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Are there any corrections, deletions, or additions to those minutes? Not hearing any. All those in favor of adopting the minutes as written for October 13th, please say aye.
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 Motion's carried unanimously. Next on our agenda is a presentation about the Veterans Memorial by Dan Garcell.
I'm not quite sure that it's a presentation, but for those of you that don't know me, you all know me. This is my wife Nancy. She's also my secretary, editor, finance officer, psychoanalyst.
Nothing to do with food providing?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
K door. Private chef. Private chef, good to go.
Yeah. So, as your people know, Bob Tobin and Tim Cameron left sometime last year. And prior to doing so, they asked me if I would be willing to get involved with Danby Mount Tabor now. Well, I'm very involved with the memorial. And because of that, I said yes, I would. So anyway, I've been appointed president of Danby Mount Tabor now. Nancy is the secretary. We also have David Middleton as vice president and Sue Kankowski as a member and Eric Newton is also a member. Anyways, we had a meeting, we've had a couple of meetings. And at our last meeting last month, I made a motion, I made a motion that we dissolve the 501(c), which is Danby Mount Tabor now. My biggest interest in that 501(c) is that memorial. And I think I've shown that since I've taken over. I mean, I spend a lot of time there, along with all the volunteers. We voted unanimously, with much discussion at the last meeting, to dissolve the 501(c). It's just not worth it. And furthermore, that memorial doesn't belong to any one group. It belongs to the people, to the people of Danby Mount Tabor.
We believe that wholeheartedly, which prompted this whole discussion at the beginning, yeah.
So...
And part of the other thing there, too, was there's a lot of other things that Danby Mount Tabor now was doing, community outreach, and but there was not any one person that wanted to have anything to do with it. Didn't want to spearhead it, didn't want to take it over, didn't want to be responsible. And it's not like it was a huge windfall for the 501(c). They were doing a lot of work on some things that just weren't producing income for the outfit. So we just...
Or interest.
Or interest. So we just thought, well, what's the point of even having it if, you know, when it should belong to the town and the people? You know, what's the point of having a 501(c), which is how we got to where we are?
Right. So anyways, I guess, I guess I'll work my way into it. It really doesn't... Well, I'm here to ask the town, I'm here to ask the select board if they would be willing to accept ownership of the memorial. We are going to dissolve the 501(c) in one form or another. As far as expenses, I mean, we have a couple of thousand bucks. The town, I think, gives us a thousand, twelve hundred dollars.
Thousand dollars. And Mount Tabor gives two.
Gives the Danby Mount Tabor now a thousand dollars a year. The insurance on that piece of property, liability insurance and so-called marine insurance, for whatever reason, is twelve hundred dollars a year. So basically, what the town gives the 501(c) is spent on insurance. As far as other expenses, there really aren't any.
Minimal.
Yeah, they're extremely minimal. All of the work that's done there is all volunteer. The grass cutting, the maintenance, it's all volunteer. Even, we had a problem with the water line this spring and Abbott Construction volunteered to repair that and did so and did a fine job, I think. There's really not much expense to keep that up. The, I would like to see the Memorial Day Memorial Day service continue and also Veterans Day service. And I guess as long as I'm living here in town, which is, I guess, the rest of my life, and that could end tomorrow, I'd be willing to take care of those things and spearhead as much as I could, as much as I possibly can, the help from volunteers to continue to do what's been done. So we're here asking if there would be any interest in the town in accepting ownership of that piece of property. Along with that comes the bit of work involved in getting that done.
Yeah, we would need to know, you know, if it's an affirmative answer, you know, what role do we play and what do we do and how would we move forward?
Yeah. So I guess that's my question to the select board. And if you have any questions for me, please file them out.
I guess question one, Dan, there's no debt on that property, correct?
No. I have a copy of the warranty deed if anybody wants to look at it.
Yep, Brad.
Here, I have it right here. So there is a clause in the warranty deed that goes back to the days of when there was a septic system on that property. And that property was tied into the septic system that services the various buildings across the street from it. So one of the town's concerns would be that that clause needs to come out of the deed so that the town would not be liable for any assessments to maintain a sewer system that we wouldn't even have a connection to, any use in.
Okay, may I address that? I did speak with you on the phone earlier today, Brad, about that, because you brought it to my attention. And I think, Tom, you were involved in taking the building down, correct? Once you moved out of there, I moved in with a lot of help from John Abbott. He, you know, he had a dozer and a truck and an excavator. There were two large concrete septic tanks there, two large ones. We opened them up, they were never used. They were empty and dry. So we busted them, we busted them open and filled them. I mean, there is no septic system there. And what was there wasn't being used. It was tied into nothing.
So you filled those tanks? Those tanks are filled?
With dirt.
Yeah.
Dirt and rocks, and there were plenty of rocks on the property.
Yeah, no, because it's funny, I planted the Christmas tree there three years ago. And where they picked to put it, first thing I dug, I hit the tank. And so I had to move the tree a little bit. And I didn't realize that it was, I thought it was probably a hollow tank at the time, so I didn't want to, but it would have been good to know that was...
And that's another one. We busted two of them. So, and they were, they were as clean as the day they were installed.
Right. Yeah, I don't think they were ever used.
No, there was no, there was no plumbing in that building, so they couldn't...
And there is piping going across the, under the road that was put in. So I don't know if the pump was ever put in, but the road was actually dumped up back when that was...
So those are to service the houses across the street? Is that was the...
No, that was the pump to that big system Annie put in at the leach fields on top of the hill.
Right. But it used to pump to a common tank, or it was designed to pump to a common tank, but then pumped up to that. So that was pretty...
So we just want the language out of there because that structure doesn't exist and...
The one on the second page? Is that the one you're talking about?
Uh, yes.
The land here conveyed may be subject to certain...
Yes.
Okay.
Property conveyed herein. So that, that group whoever operates the septic system now could not say, well, it's right in your deed that you agree to help us maintain the septic system. We're not going to maintain something that we don't have.
Yeah. Doesn't exist.
Right.
And look at this.
Not yet. And I did check with Vermont League of Cities and Towns about the insurance. And they said that the cost of liability insurance is seven cents per hundred dollars of valuation. The value needs to be determined by the select board. So whatever we feel the property is worth is what we would put down on our policy.
Right. Priceless and a dollar.
Well, I guess we...
A dollar.
Priceless and a dollar.
Yeah, I mean, we'd be most concerned about liability insurance, but we might want to have, you know, other protection, too, if a wind event happens and the sign gets knocked down or something.
If you had to pay retail for, to replace any of that, if it got damp, it should be a lot of money.
Yeah.
Right.
Would it be helpful to see the policy that it currently has? Do you want to copy of this?
No, I mean, we're, we're good with the municipal policy.
Right. Believe me, they'll come look.
I mean, I would like to make a motion that we accept the gift of the property, the Veterans Memorial property, as stated in the deed, subject to just our attorney, the town's attorney, reviewing that, just to make sure that he... The only thing that, like Brad had said in there, that that would... That probably makes sense, but I'd like to hear it from our attorney, that that has to be removed in the transfer. But I guess, subject to any, any notes that the, our attorney comes up with that he would like.
Okay, so the motion is to accept the property pending review of the deed by our attorney.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Now is their discussion.
I would like to thank Dan for all the work he's done on it, because it means quite a lot.
Yes, it does.
It's not just me, oh, there is a number of guys.
You're the one I see driving by a lot.
I play over there.
I think it's a beautiful and wonderful thing to have in the center of town. Very appropriate.
Can I ask this question? In your discussion with the lawyer, is there a way to add some type of a phrase that the memorial remains in memorial in perpetuity? Like add that to the, so that, you know, that it would never, that land can never be used as anything other than a memorial? That would be kind of important.
Yeah, that would be, when you guys transfer it to us, it would be that way. But if he writes it in and the attorney's aware of it, and I'm sure he may do the word before you guys.
Okay. That's great.
Do you have an attorney who would draft the deed? Or are you asking that our attorney?
I guess, I'm asking that the town attorney help us out. We don't, we don't have, we've got about $2,000 in the account. I don't know how far that would go.
And does everybody agree that the town attorney should do the work?
Yeah, we definitely can have our town attorney do that.
Yes.
Yes.
You're gonna have the town.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Could I just add something else? So I think you've seen the sign we have out there for having a service this Saturday at 11 o'clock, but they're talking about two inches of rain Saturday. So we put a sign out there, hopefully, rain date, Sunday at 2:00 p.m. The other thing is, I've, you know, I've been approached by a couple of ladies from the Garden Club. They'd like to see a Christmas tree go back up there. I've had discussions with them about that. Trees grow and they grow large.
Right.
And I don't want, I don't want a Christmas tree to take away from that memorial. So I have...
Several.
Yeah, I have volunteered, I have about four dozen Christmas trees on my property, which I've been slowly cutting down. I planted about 75 about 20 years ago. They're pretty big. You got one.
I know, I did have one last year.
So my intent is, right after Thanksgiving, I'm going over there. I have a postal drill on the back of my tractor. I'm gonna drill a hole, drop a tree in.
And then we go take it, take it away after Christmas.
After Christmas and the decorations are off of it, I'll come and yank it out of there. And maybe we can do the same thing again next year.
Just as a suggestion, as a suggestion, if you drill your, use your post hole digger, slide in a piece of PVC pipe.
For the sleeve.
And then, yeah, and then just put a cap over it for the summer.
Oh, good.
And then you can just uncap it each year.
Yeah. I have to figure out what size trunks I have.
We can bring a piece of coburn down.
I gotta shorten them down. But yeah, good suggestion.
That's a great idea.
So another item that I think should be addressed, you've indicated that you're willing to be the quote-unquote overseer.
Yeah.
I think that we need to make sure that that is an ongoing position. So it doesn't fall like on the road crew to maintain it or something.
Like a memorial charity?
Um, yeah, just like places, different towns that are larger than us have a Parks and Recreation Commissioner, just like we have a tree warden and a, you know, the list of things in the town.
So we need to add that to our appointed position.
Memorial supervisor, whatever, overseer, something. Yep. And you'll be appointed.
Again, I'd be more than happy to do that, do that as long as I'm able.
Right.
And I've got a few vets that I believe would back me and help me out.
Right.
So I thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
That's a wonderful thing.
All right, so I guess we'll see you when, next month?
Um, yeah, I'll get this to the attorney tomorrow for his review. And I think we can have conversations.
Yeah, because we have a, we have a board meeting on the 30th.
Okay.
We agreed to make the presentation at the last meeting, so it's in the minutes that we're all on board with dissolving the 501(c). And then another board meeting, now that we've had a meeting, we have to, on record, in order to dissolve it, we have to show that it was accepted and blah, blah, blah.
Yes.
The attorney's notes back to you before their meeting.
You would have to transfer the property before you dissolve the organization.
Correct. So, but at least at the next board meeting on the 30th, when we, it'll probably be our final one, that we can have it in the minutes.
Now, that's 30th of November.
Of November, yeah.
You might want to make sure James is aware of that.
Right there. So we have like 20 days. And he's, he's good. He gets back to us very quickly. Okay.
All right, thank you very much. If you're able to, please, please come this weekend.
And bring an umbrella, just in case.
Post whether you're canceling or changing?
We posted it on Danny Dan Weekend Front Porch. And then I said we'll do one more final update late tomorrow if it's for sure canceled Saturday, which it looks like it will, because it's supposed to be 100% rain.
Okay.
And hopefully, Sunday afternoon, it's moved on out.
Well, whether it has or not, Sunday afternoon, we're doing something.
Yeah, we're doing something.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, good night.
So next, we will move on to our hazard mitigation plan. And we have Stephanie here, too.
That's flood hazard or hazard?
It's the local hazard mitigation plan. Oops, I gave you the plan. Thank you. Right. So just quick introduction.
Do you want to just pull up to be heard well on the mic and stuff like that?
I'm okay, I can project.
Okay, good.
So just a brief introduction, I'm Stephanie Burke, planner with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And I've been working with representatives from the towns of Danby and Mount Tabor to help the communities update a local hazard mitigation plan. And I am so proud to be able to report on their behalf that we are 99% done with a final draft. So I'm here really on their behalf to present the work to date and provide folks with a sense of the next steps. So what I intended to do tonight was just give you a very brief, high-level overview of the plan and the work that's been completed. And then, as I said, describe for you where we go after tonight. So what I've handed out to you is a copy of the final draft with a date in the top header of tonight, 11:10. So that's a way that you could always make sure that you're looking at the correct version of this document. And I've also given you what's called the Local Mitigation Plan Review Tool. So this would be submitted with the plan when we're at that point to the state hazard mitigation planner. And this is what she will use to make sure that your plan contains all of the federally required elements. So this is basically a checklist that walks you through each of those elements. And we indicate where in your plan, the section and page numbers, you can find that information, okay? So in terms of the plan itself, it is a five-year plan that ultimately will require FEMA approval. And it's intended to help the communities identify what your highest natural hazard risks are and some actions that are reasonable and practical for the communities to try to complete in order to reduce those risks. That's it in a nutshell. I consider this one of kind of the two foundation planning tools in communities that relate to the area of emergency management. You have one plan that the select board adopts every year that's called your... that's called your Local Emergency Management Plan. And that provides a structure for you to help manage a response when there's an incident occurring. And this plan, as I said, is a five-year plan. Ultimately requires FEMA approval in addition to select board adoption. That is a sunny day plan. This is not the plan you're gonna grab when things are going sideways. This is the plan that you're gonna refer to when you're looking to make improvements or take mitigation measures to make something more resilient to a future natural hazard impact. Okay? So the plan itself contains a really brief introduction that outlines what hazard mitigation is, the concept, a very brief purpose that outlines the benefits of planning, and clearly states that, you know, this is a plan. It's not a legally binding document. It's not some kind of contract between the communities and FEMA. It's really just a tool to outline goals and actions that you would like to try to complete to prevent future loss of life and property from natural hazards. Okay? Section 3 provides a community profile with some characteristics of the region that will give the reader a sense for who you are, you know? And what might make you more vulnerable or maybe more resilient to natural hazard impacts. Section 5, or Section 4, I'm sorry, is the planning process where we have to document who helped develop the plan and what process and steps did you take from kickoff to, you know, final submittal to the state in order to get this updated. That section also includes a discussion about what land use and development and mitigation priorities may have changed since your last FEMA-approved plan, which was in 2016 for Danby, but way back in 2009 for Mount Tabor. And then we really kind of get into the heart of the plan. Sections 5 and 6. I think of them as kind of companion pieces or bookends. Section 5 outlines the hazard identification and risk assessment that your planning team members went through to identify what they believe the communities are most vulnerable to, which included flooding, primarily flash flooding and fluvial erosion, and then to a lesser degree inundation flooding. And then extreme cold, snow, ice, kind of your really nasty Vermont winter storms, the impacts from those. So Section 5 includes a profile for each of those highest-risk natural hazards. For the lower-risk hazards, we reference the State Hazard Mitigation Plan for more information. But we've got some, you know, good pictures. We've got a description of the history, kind of chronologically, of the most significant events in the region. And so we kind of wrap it all up with a vulnerability summary at the end of that section. And there's a tagline on page 15 at the end of Section 5 that says, "The hazard identification and risk assessment is the foundation for the mitigation strategy to reduce future loss." And I think that's a perfect way to bridge the two sections, 5 and 6, because Section 6 is the hazard mitigation strategy, where you outline some mitigation goals for the communities. You describe four different categories of community capabilities to basically identify and implement hazard mitigation actions. So we're not talking about all of your capabilities. We're trying to bring it a little bit more of a narrow focus on your capabilities in terms of being able to complete the actions that are recommended later in this plan. So we're looking at your administrative and technical capabilities, some planning and regulatory, financial, and then education and outreach. We also talk about your National Flood Insurance Program compliance. Danby is a member of the NFIP, whereas Mount Tabor, primarily due to their size and limited capacity, is not. And then we also highlight the state's incentive, financial incentive program for communities to encourage them to undertake flood mitigation measures specifically. So we move on in Section 6 to get at, you know, what actions did the planning team think were reasonable and practical for the communities to try to implement? So that started with a very broad... That started with an evaluation of a very broad range of potential actions in four different categories. They looked at local plans and regulations, structure and infrastructure projects, natural systems protection projects, as well as some more kind of soft and squishy education and awareness programs. The results of all of that effort are documented in Table 5 of Section 6, on pages 21 and 22. And from that process, there was a prioritization and a grouping of whether the action was gonna be recommended for implementation or not. Okay? So the actions from Table 5 that are included in the recommended for implementation part of that table, you will then find carried over starting on page 23 in Table 6. And Table 6 basically contains mini-project profiles for each of the actions. And I think it's important for you to realize that you've got an action in each of the four categories: local plans and regulations, structure and infrastructure, natural systems, and education and outreach. And you have an assortment of actions that will target the highest-risk natural hazards and vulnerabilities that you've described in Section 5, in that previous section. That will be important for FEMA, okay? So we round out Section 6 with a description of the process for incorporating this plan's requirements into other planning mechanisms. So FEMA likes to see the integration of these concepts of risk reduction and resiliency incorporated throughout government operations. You know, they feel that you'll be most successful in accomplishing your mitigation work if that's the kind of approach you take. So the plan ends with Section 7, where we describe how it will be maintained on an annual basis, as well as on its five-year life cycle. And the appendices include a certificate of adoption, which we'll get to as part of your next steps, a copy of a very large format map that was used by the planning team to kind of identify specific geographic locations for certain vulnerable impacts. And then Appendix C includes a table of actions from your last FEMA-approved plan. And then Appendix D provides a summary of any public comments that we've received throughout this plan development process. Any questions on kind of the big picture? So in terms of next steps, I would reference you to page 6. So tonight's meeting, if you're looking at the left-hand column, is very close to the bottom of the left-hand column. So November 10th, we're presenting this final work in order to advertise to the community that the work is complete. And this plan will now, after tonight, go out for a public comment period. And just like we did at the midpoint when we came and presented work through Section 5, we're going to basically have the public comment period coincide with your next regular meetings in December for both Mount Tabor and Danby.
And this is also being advertised in the news guide, as I said, you have approved.
Yes, thank you. So, you know, there's a variety of methods that have been used to communicate to the community that this plan is available for public comment. As Brad mentioned, there's a notice going out in the regional paper. There will be information posted on the town website. I would encourage you to use other social media tools available to you if that's, you know, something that you would commonly do to get the word out in the community. My office has also posted this plan on our website, our Facebook page. And I've also done direct email communications to the list of key partners that are on the back of the cover page and local officials in your neighboring communities. So we'll be casting a pre-broad net to let folks know that this is available. And then what I would ask at your next meetings is that you work with Shelley, because Shelley is your local person that all, any public comments will be submitted by email to. So I'd ask that you work with her to see, and I will be doing that as well, to see what, if any, comments come in during the public comment period. But at your December meeting, I would ask that you have an agenda item to discuss the plan amongst yourselves, as well as provide an opportunity for any public input or discussion once folks have had a chance to actually read it. And if there are significant comments that come in, those would be, you know, forwarded back to the planning team to discuss how to address. And we kind of rework things and be back again with a revised final. But if the comments are, you know, little to none during the comment period at your December meeting, I would be asking for the board to give approval for the plan to be submitted for approval pending adoption, okay? That will be the next step that we take once the towns, both Mount Tabor and Danby, are comfortable with the content as is. Because once we make that submittal to the state hazard mitigation planner through Vermont Emergency Management, we cannot make any more changes to this plan. So she will take this review tool that I've shared with you. She'll go through the plan, make sure that it has all the federally required elements. I'm sure she will have some degree of comments that she would like us to address in the plan. Usually, they are very manageable and not a heavy lift. So we'll get those turned around, probably, get it submitted back to her. Once we get that approval pending adoption from the state, the plan will be ready for adoption by both boards, okay? Once the plan's adopted, then we submit for FEMA final approval. And that's the date that will go on the cover of your plan. And that's the date that will start the five-year lifespan for the plan. Any questions on the next steps? Okay, hearing none. Part of your next steps include filling in some minor placeholders that we weren't able to button up before tonight. So I will draw your attention to page 8. So page 8 is the section of the planning process where we're describing any changes in land use or development or mitigation priorities. So I have one placeholder on page 8, the bottom of the left-hand column. I need to know what the folks in Danby are most proud of in terms of your mitigation accomplishments since your 2016 plan. So the table in the back outlines what your actions were at that time. But, you know, I would like you to give some thought in addition to what might be in that table, anything else that you would like to take this opportunity to showcase as an accomplishment. So there's an example above for the accomplishments that Mount Tabor was proud of. So I wanna be able to include something for Danby here as well. Because I guarantee that you all have done a tremendous amount of work that would qualify as mitigation work to make your transportation network more flood resilient. And I'm sure there could be others. So I would like during the public comment period for you folks to provide some input to fill in that gap. And then the one other placeholder that we have is on page 27 at the top of the page. The mitigation action for installing backup power at critical facilities. I believe that the Fire District Spring was one of the critical facilities that was contemplated as needing backup power.
That's not the town, though.
I understand, but the lead party is listed as the Fire District, right? So if this...
It's kind of still apples and oranges. It might as well be the Town of Dorset you're talking about.
No, because the Town of Dorset doesn't serve the Danby and Mount Tabor communities with public drinking water. So if you choose to not include the Fire District in this action, that's completely fine. I can delete it from the plan. I just need feedback as to what you would like to see here.
I think you still gotta go to the Fire District on that. It's not the town. The select board has nothing to do with Danby, Mount Tabor, Fire District.
It's its own little municipality.
I understand what the Fire District is, yes. So I would ask that as part of the public comment period, you just provide that feedback. And if you want to remove them from part of your critical facilities list and, you know, working with them as a partner to do that, totally fine. I just didn't get that clear direction the last time I met with the planning team. So I'm asking for that now so that I can finish the plan on your behalf. And I guess the last thing I would just say is, you know, you guys had a group of people that worked really hard over a rather protracted period of time to get this plan done. So I think you should recognize the efforts of your select board members as a whole that came in in August to help get this across the finish line, as well as Tom Johnston, your Local Emergency Management Director and member of the Volunteer Fire Department, as well as Shelley Taylor, your Planning Commission Chair. So Phil... Lidstone from Mount Tabor was also a member on that team representing the interests of Mount Tabor. If you guys are all set, I'm gonna peel out of here, okay? If you have any questions about what to do in terms of public comment, you know how to reach me. And hopefully, we'll be closing this out shortly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Okay, next we will move on to the Treasurer's Report. And that includes the second reading and adoption of some policies that Jennifer has recommended and that we looked at for a first reading at the last meeting. And you should all have a copy of that. So this policy, for those of you that don't have one in front of you, is to establish a public policy that provides clarity regarding tax collection, due dates and times, and proper forms of payment related to tax payments. Would someone care to make a motion to adopt this policy?
I'll make the motion.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the policy, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. And Jennifer, would you please make sure that that gets put in the policy manual that the town clerk maintains? Thank you. Do you have any other issues for us?
No, I do have a question. Are you guys going to discuss, collect the comments that were made over here?
She's not here and it wasn't added to the agenda. So unless someone brought it up under new business, which I'm not looking to at the moment, unless anyone else is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. And then we move on to the Road Commissioner's Report. Jen, one quick thing. So I will get in touch with you.
Yeah, we can do it this weekend. I'll bring my computer down, and we can do it.
Okay.
Okay? Yep, just letting you know.
So this month has been a real busy month. I'm going to let Steve lead on. All of Parrish Hill was cut.
Not all of it.
Well, 90% of it. We got a lot of done there. You got your sand all put up?
Yep. We've started on the bridge project on Lily Hill.
Started on the bridge project on Lily Hill. Did the wing wall on Rashes or on Dambie Hill Road. Riprap that, pulled out the old wing wall that was blocking the river.
We've been ditching on Green Hill.
Ditching on Green Hill. See, you had a lot of...
We're trying to be busy.
Nope.
You've done a beautiful job on what you did.
Yeah, no, it really, this month is, a lot was accomplished in one month.
It's because you have a quota.
What's that?
It's because you have a quota.
No, it's because there's more people on the curb.
Yeah. One more person makes a big difference.
It makes a very big difference because the first week that I started, Larry and Randy were working on the end of Shortcut Road while I was around the corner cutting trees to where we had two projects going at the same time. And when they needed me, they came and got me. And when I needed them, I went and got them. So we can spread out a little further.
And did you want to address this, or did you want... Kenny and I looked at it. The only thing that I can see, and we're talking about the contract for highway maintenance and repair. First, the, everything in here is pretty straightforward, except for most municipalities, and we would want to be the same. Under Article 14...
What page?
It's Page, I don't have a, oh, I guess it's Page E. Article 14. Under the warranty, did everyone get to that? It's contractors' warrants, all work performed under the contract for the period of one year from the date of work is complete and accepted by the municipality. And that is standard. But then they also had added, the warranty must be secured either by a contract's performance bond or such other security as acceptable by the municipality. That, that's kind of a lot to ask of some contractors, and really, it's not generally used in, matter of fact, I don't know of any of the municipalities where we work, that a bond is needed to be posted.
Okay.
So I think the warranty...
You ought to strike that.
Yeah, so in Article 14, just strike in...
The second sentence.
Yep, the second sentence. If everyone wants to read that first. So basically, it would be saying that our contractors are still warranting the work for a year, but we're hiring contractors that we have faith in, ones that we need to have post in bonds because they're going to skip the country on us. Everything else was pretty straightforward. There was no other comments, right, Kenny?
No, I didn't see anything that was out of the ordinary.
So as far as that one goes, I think we're good to adopt it if you want to do that one.
So I will entertain a motion to adopt highway maintenance by contractors policy.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting this policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Now, I've got the, we already adopted the drug testing program, correct? We did that last meeting. For some reason, it's on my desk here, but...
Yeah, the other one was supposed to be exposure to releases of hazardous entry.
And there was no generic guide on that. So I asked Mike for it just recently, like today. So I guess we can adopt that. I mean...
I mean, if we're looking for something more official, I'm sure I can come up with something for the next meeting to have a policy.
Yeah, I mean, we, just something basically a lockout, tag-out type of...
Locking against motion.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I can come up with something.
That's where you shine, Mike.
Yeah, if you could get that out to us...
Yeah, give me a week or so to get something.
So we'll hold off on that since we don't have one that was a good one.
I can reach out to a couple companies I know that have some fairly basic policies.
Okay, so that's good to have that done. And did you have any other items? Next item on the agenda is to accept the offers on various pieces of personal property that are at 43 Tinmouth Road. I got offers on different things, and no, no two people were competing against each other. So I have an offer of $100 for the double door on the back of the house. I have an offer of $150 for the washer and dryer. I have an offer of $100 for the toilet and the jacuzzi tub. And I have an offer of $50 for the pellet stove.
I make a motion, we accept the offers.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting these offers, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. And I will notify these people of our action and arrange for them to pick up the items. Did I, when I went down the list, did I say $300 for the deck, or did I skip one?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. There was an offer of $300 for the deck. Everybody good with including that?
Yep.
Okay. So just to repeat, it's $100 for the double doors on the back, $150 for the washer and dryer, $300 for the deck, $100 for the toilet and sink, or the jacuzzi tub, and $50 for the pellet stove. Okay, that has passed. And next item is old business on the issue of drainage on Depot Street. We left at the last meeting that we would proceed with the hydro-geological study if the Town of Mount Tabor would agree to pay for 50% of it. And I don't have a hard copy of it, but I forwarded to you the email that I received from Phil Lidstone, chairman of the Mount Tabor Select Board, saying they are not interested in doing that at this time. So that puts it on us. What do we want to do, if anything? Do we want to just fix our storm drain? Or do we want to get into a larger project?
I guess, are, we haven't brought, are they okay with us working in their road?
Well, they had said so a number of years ago, if you feel...
Well, I'm just wondering, you know, how far we can go with our project if we have to go into their road.
Yeah, I mean, if we can't, there's no sense fixing that storm drain halfway down the street and not being able to continue.
No, well, you know, when we fixed what we thought was the problem, the Town of Dambie had the contractor do the fixing down by the stop sign, which is in Mount Tabor. So remember when we opened the end of that drain?
Yeah, I opened it.
Yeah.
I didn't know who I was working for. I didn't get paid, so...
And you put the ripract there. So do you want me to get a second approval on this, or...
I think we probably should get them to give us a, some sort of agreement that they're going to allow us to work that whole road to address any stormwater issues, and we won't charge them for it.
Are we going to end up getting ourselves into a nightmare on their portion of the road?
I'm not saying we're doing anything yet. I'm just saying if we're going to get their approval, then we can discuss what our project actually is. I think as long as, like Brad said, it should be a foregone thing that they're going to give us the approval. But I guess I didn't want to even discuss anything until we formally had their approval that they're going to let us. And then I guess we can rack our brains what we do want to do. I mean, if we choose that it's too much of a project, you know, and going to get ourselves in trouble, we don't have to. But I don't think it costs us anything to at least, see, right now, they're saying they want nothing to do with the project. So if they're going to let us head the project, we're just asking them that they're okay with us working in their...
Well, I'm taking it from this conversation that we're not going to be doing a hydro-geological study. We're just going to basically use a Band-Aid approach and fix our storm drain that people are complaining about.
I would say, because if Mount Tabor doesn't want to be involved with hydro, with that study, because ultimately, our stop's halfway where that study would start.
Right, and the people who are getting the worst flooding in their basements happen to live in Mount Tabor.
I don't think we should be paying to fix that.
I don't either.
So we don't even want to go any farther with this?
I don't know.
I guess I would like, I guess I would like the ability to work in their area, maybe, not saying we're going to do a full major reconstruction.
We'd still have to be in their area.
But I think that we should get them to formally give us a right-of-way or easement or...
Which I think should be drawn up by the attorney. Okay? So I'll take a motion to authorize me to have the attorney draw up an agreement to let us...
Should we ask them first before we spend any money? Just like send them an email, hey, are you going to give us a right-of-way before they, because then we send them over the attorney's draft and they say, no, we aren't going to... I mean, I don't think they're going to, but should we just send them a quick email, asking them if they're okay with us working in their thing?
I can send them a quick email. I can't guarantee that we'll get a quick answer.
Well, I'm just trying to cover our, you know...
I agree. Totally agree.
So do we want to make a motion to approve Brad contacting the attorney if he gets...
If we get a yes, either.
If we get a yes from Mount Tabor, that way we're not pushing this further out?
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
Yep, I'll go along with that.
Do you want to clearly state the motion?
So I will make the motion that we give, we approve Brad to contact the attorney
Draw up...
Draw up an agreement with Mount Tabor so we can work in their right-of-way pending an agreement from Mount Tabor.
A verbal that they are interested in, are going to let us, yeah.
I think it's verbal.
It doesn't have to be perfect.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried unanimously. Any other old business?
I need to just hearken back to the Veterans Memorial because somebody asked a question in the chat that I didn't see. Chris Hardley is asking if the town can be subject to distribution of the 501(c)(3) funds that they have left when they dissolve. And could that be something you ask the attorney? They've got $2,000. When they dissolve, where does that go? Can that go to the town of Dambie since we're taking hold of that?
So not being part of that, I thought the way Dan was talking, they were going to use those funds towards the attorney's fees.
No, because...
I didn't hear that, but...
Well, he asked our attorney to draw up the contract, but they probably have to have an attorney to dissolve the corporation.
So I guess he's asking just whatever portion is left from, after they've done all that, and maybe there will be nothing left.
No, that's a good question, Chris. I mean, it's worth, it's worth asking them, even if it's 500 bucks. I mean, because we were planning on at least giving some sort of stipend to whoever maintains it for their gas and stuff. So it would buy us a year or two of gas for a lawnmower.
So thanks, Chris, and sorry I didn't catch it sooner.
Okay, moving on to new business. Ken, I believe you had something about...
Yeah, it was just brought to my attention that there used to be signs up on the Cascades, and then they disappear, is for the speed limit signs. And that is set at a certain speed limit, correct?
Yes, all of our roads, we have a speed limit ordinance, and all of our roads have speed limits assigned to them so that they are enforceable if the sheriff gives a ticket there. So yes, there should be signs there. There should be signs, and I don't believe there is. So are you suggesting a sign at each end of it? Yes, that was...
To be legal, you would have to do one or two.
Yeah, it has to be one down on Route 7 and one at the intersection of...
Right.
Raymond.
Raymond.
Order 255 miles.
So take a peek at the speed limit ordinance, which I can get for you. And we'll get two signs ordered.
I'll look before we order, so we may have signs.
Yeah.
Say 55.
No, we're not doing 55, Tom. 45 is the most I'm going to give you.
Come on, I want to stretch to 140 over the hill. It says 5, 60.
I think it's a 30 mile an hour road, if memory serves me correct. Okay, any other old business? Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it. Second.
Okay, meeting is adjourned at 8:12.